If I could, could I please get a call to order? Yeah, we got to fix that. Better?
Yeah.
All right. Now call this meeting to order for the City of Walton, City Council Meeting for March 12th, Could I please get everyone's stand for the invocation?
Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy came and come, as will be done on earth as in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We hope it is not to the temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Javonica, please get a roll call.
Rose Beach?
Here.
Amy Long?
Here.
Terry Courtney?
Here.
Sherri Gaskell?
Dan Martin?
Matt Brown?
Here.
He is.
Here.
Thanks, Dan.
Few announcements. March 23rd will be the City Easter Egg Hunt at the Walton Park. April 2nd will be a caucus meeting, 6:30 PM, Council Chambers, City Hall. April 9th will be an events planning meeting, 6:15, Senior Center. Also on April 9th will be a council meeting at 7:00 PM, Senior Center.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
If I could, could I please get an approval of the previous minutes? February 6th caucus meeting and the February 13th council meeting. The past, you've combined them. You may do so if you choose.
Motion to approve and combine.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
All right. All right. We've got some special recognition here. Want to recognize Mike Wood. Mike's in the room. Hi, Mike. All right. We got that one done? Okay? All right. Gee, you've been... It's a hoax, man. It's a ruse. Gig's up. Mr. Gee, we want to wish you all the best in retirement. Congratulate you on 42 years of business ownership in the City of Walton. And we're going to miss you. I'm sure that we will all see you around. But in recognition of that, I have here a key to the city for you. If I can get the thing to go in here. Jesus Christ. Always do this.
I think we should all clap.
Ooh. All right. Come here, man.
Thank you.
Amen.
Before you leave, sir, if we can get a picture of you and the mayor, just so we can put that on the city website.
I think we should invite Sandra Park to come in.
It's the Hensley family here. Let me see, Reggie. Hold off on that. All right. I'll give them a little time in case they show up. Major Mark, Service Department.
Can we get a copy? Counselors have got a copy of my report, but folks here present, this is the Sheriff's Office Monthly Activity Report for the City Hall for February 2024. All told, there was 900 assassins' law enforcement events in the city, if they were, some of those were those, three 911 hangups.
It'll have to.
Deputies responded to 26 armed drops, seven deaths in the local area, five anti-terrorists.
I think that's what all these people, Mr. Gee.
Deputy's investigating ET auto accidents. There was one reported apartment or residence. Deputies conducted 19 business checks, attempted 40 social or criminal summonses, handled three criminal reports, 14 domestic disputes, six reports of intoxicated persons, three emotional crises, two juvenile truck calls, assisted 13 minors in broken hands, 12 minor windows, all 10 requests for information, all 440 spot checks, handled 18 reports of suspicious activity, investigated two theft reports, paid $53,000 in fine lines. Sixty-eight traffic stops, 51 vehicle violations. We unlocked nine cars.
Thank you.
Four murder calls, and all four, they issued 44 citations, and arrested nine defendants. Any questions? I can answer three.
Thank you, sir.
If anybody here saw a lead for Mr. Gee, you're more than welcome to stick around, but more than welcome to go take some pictures or... Yeah.
Before he leaves, can we get his pictures?
With you. Yeah. Take a picture. Let's keep going. Come on, babe.
Don't we have to move out?
No. Maybe I'm better than that.
Oh, Nellie.
Chief Vaz, Paul Fire District. Thank you, Chief.
Let me start my report of what's the city policy to the council mayor. My report will help provide January and February. I'm pretty colorful up until due to technical difficulties. I need the person who makes these reports for me, but did not get a chance to make it. So this was the best I could produce for you. First, for the multiple incidents, we completed 89 emergency medical services rooms, an additional 40 fire-related incidents, of those five were motor vehicle crashes, and we had one for a further investigation. As far as the combined months of January, February, and here today, and of February, we completed a total response number of 337 responses as far as various incidents. Your report has the more appropriate detailed breakdown of high-risk responses, but despite the 337 responses that we made, 17 of them were motor vehicle crashes of various severities. We had two chimney fires and an additional five structure fires that we responded to during the year. Has anyone been...
Everybody okay in front of the fire?
Yep. No, no.
So the fire light would be at the...
Yes, ma'am. Will you come to that every year? Because I believe, one year, what, two or three years ago, I was getting a call in the middle of the event, they had to seal out a little earlier than originally had planned. Yes.
Excited?
Yeah. If there's no unperceived emergency response request, we'll be there. Does anyone have a question?
Thank you, T.J.
Thank you.
Cardinal Engineering, Abaughian.
Mayor, evening everybody. Engineering updates for March on the High Street project. Duke is... Duke Energy is still working with the local side to get their full relocation. I also got an updated set of plans to get the new technical engineer for the micro pile for the stated request, and so I've been updating my plans. I think it's one of these little add-backs that get the authorization bid. On our road projects for the year, I'm working with the inspection currently. Our total cost taken for the project is $177,425, and the majority of the streets that we have on there are asphalt market. There's a leak, there's a long concrete driveway that Jerry requested for a pump station. So whereas last year we did separate contracts for asphalt and concrete, we're just going to do this one contract for everything this year. Should have everything ready by the end of this month to advertise. We have a bit of a... On the splash pad, Jerry and I have been working with Alex, the vendor's engineer, just to get through the current maintenance of the building inspection, plumbing inspection, electrical inspection. Should have been touched by that monitor, so it's okay, and everything that he's putting in the ground already. And then we also got qualified to sit, and so I felt like that was an important enough issue for me to bring to your attention this evening. Thank you very much for your service, and thank you for the recognition of Mr. Gee. Serve it well deserved.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. I can address some of that if I may. I would not say that four-fifths of our board is not qualified to serve. I would say that currently, four-fifths of our board is not compliant. This has been a... Should have been a county issue as far as who is supposed to be enforcing and making sure of the training. The city has taken over that, or at least put a little bit more of an eye on it. You know, I do appoint when council approves. As far as it goes, yes, they are not currently... The four-fifths are not currently compliant. We are working to correct that situation, but being as I believe that these folks are all very qualified to be in their positions, and given that I have the authority alone to remove them, I have no intent to remove them from their seats as of now. I will give them time. We have given them several different ways in which they will be able to meet their training requirements. Okay? Thank you. Any other citizens comment? You not hearing? All right. Get to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a point of order, maybe directed at the city attorney. Could you read? I understand that ordinances can be read in summary form, but I would ask that maybe a council member ask the mayor and city attorney to read number one. It's intended to be higher and not by summary, for the purposes of transparency and to inform the people here of ordinance number 2024-02.
Sure. Think it's a great ordinance. I will read it as a matter of fact. How about that? Okay. That's next on the agenda. That's right where I was at, and as per usual, was going to toss it over to the good counselor, but I will read this. City of Walton, ordinance number 2024-02. An ordinance of the City of Walton, Kentucky, creating a new section of Chapter 36 of the City of Walton Code of Ordinances, in order to adopt a policy for the use of city credit cards by city employees, officers, and elected officials, being ordained by the City of Walton, Kentucky as follows. Section one. All right. Section one, a new section of Chapter 36 of the Code of Walton Ordinances is hereby created. Section 36.04, to read as follows. This is all new to the existing ordinance. Correct, counselor?
Correct.
Okay. Use of city credit cards. A city credit card shall only be used by authorized city employees, officers, and elected officials, and only for goods and services to be exclusively for city purposes. Personal use of any city credit card is prohibited. Any such use will require immediate reimbursement and may result in disciplinary action and possible dismissal and/or legal action. Each city credit card transaction shall be documented by a receipt or invoice which states or displays the following information: vendor name, date of purchase, service, description and quantity of each item purchased or rendered, per item cost available from the merchant, total cost of the transaction, last four digits of card number. Food and meal purchases are only for city-sponsored or authorized meetings and events, provided such purchase is properly documented with detailed receipts showing the food items purchased plus any tip, which shall not exceed 20%. The business reason for the food... Thank you. Business reason for the food/meal, and a list of those who were in attendance. If any of the above is not presented on the receipt or provided documentation, the city employee, officer, or elected official shall handwrite the missing information. The receipt or invoice shall be provided to the city clerk within seven days after the transaction or within seven days after his or her return from travel, if applicable. If the receipt or invoice is not provided to the city clerk within 14 days after the transaction or travel, the city employee, officer, or elected official shall immediately reimburse the city for the amount of credit card transaction. If reimbursement is not made, the applicable amount shall be deducted from the next pay. If there are three or more incidents of failure to provide a receipt or invoice within any one-year period, credit card privileges shall be terminated for that city employee, officer, or elected official, and disciplinary action may follow. All right. Now to the old parts again. All ordinances are part of the ordinance. Ordinances in conflict here with, to the extent of the conflict, if any are hereby repealed. Section three, if any sentence clause, section or part of this ordinance, or the application thereof to this particular situation, is for any reason found to be unconstitutional, illegal, invalid, the validity of any such provision of this ordinance shall not affect the validity of any other provisions hereof. And such other provisions shall remain in full force and effect as long as they remain valid in the absence of that provision determined to be invalid. Section four, this ordinance may be read and published in summary form. I can still read. Right. You just deprived me of getting paid by the word. I know.
That doesn't happen.
This ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Courtney, and you typically have the habit of voting on first reading. You can do that now if you'd like by motion. Motion to approve.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
And resolution number four, next item of business, number 2024-03, resolution of the City of Walton, Kentucky, adopting Northern Kentucky Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan for the year 2024. Okay. That was the title to it. Basically, this resolution would authorize the city to put its stamp of approval on the Northern Kentucky Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was adopted or which was formulated by the Northern Kentucky Area Development District. You all heard a presentation at your caucus meeting on this. My other cities that I'm involved in have already adopted this. I do, as the attorney, recommend that you do adopt this Hazard Mitigation Plan. There's no downside to it. There's a lot of pluses to it, as she outlined last week. So you can do that by motion.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes.
Counselor comments? Rose Beach? Counselwoman Long?
It's nice to see so many people here. I mean, really nice. Hopefully y'all come to the events planning meeting before the next city council meeting. At 6:30? At 6:15. I'm late. I was late about work. So 6:15 to help plan the events of our town. The second Tuesday of the month.
Counselwoman Courtney?
Just echoing what Amy said. Thank you for being here tonight. Matt Brown?
Counselwoman Brown?
No comment. No amendment.
Okay. Sher, yours on the day. Counselwoman... and a list of those who were in attendance. If any of the above is not presented on the receipt or provided documentation, the city employee, officer, or elected official shall handwrite the missing information. The receipt or invoice shall be provided to the city clerk within seven days after the transaction or within seven days after his or her return from travel, if applicable. If the receipt or invoices is not provided to the city clerk within 14 days after the transaction or travel, the city employee, officer, or elected official shall immediately reimburse the city for the amount of credit card transaction. If reimbursement is not made, the applicable amount shall be deducted from the next pay. If there are three or more incidents of failure to provide a receipt or invoice within any one-year period, credit card privileges shall be terminated for that city employee, officer, or elected official, and disciplinary action may follow. All right, now to the old parts again. All ordinances are part of the ordinance. Ordinances in conflict here with, to the extent of the conflict, if any are hereby repealed. Section three. If any sentence clause, section, or part of this ordinance or the application thereof to this particular situation is for any reason found to be unconstitutional, illegal, invalid, the validity of any such provision of this ordinance shall not affect the validity of any other provisions hereof. And such other provisions shall remain in full force and effect as long as they remain valid in the absence of that provision determined to be invalid. Section four. This ordinance may be read and published in summary form. I can still read. You just deprived me of getting paid by the word. I know. So this ordinance was sponsored by council member Courtney. And you typically have the habit of voting on first reading. You can do that now if you'd like by motion.
Motion to approve.
Rose Beach?
Amy Long?
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes. Municipal Order 2024-03. A municipal order reappointing and approving Dan Martin to the Board of Directors of the Walton Economic Development Authority, Incorporated, for a new four-year term to expire on December 31, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rose Beach?
Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes. Resolution 2024-02. Authorizing participants in the Kentucky League of Cities. Ah, got you, got you. Authorizing participation in the Kentucky League of Cities Investment Pool Plus. Is that self-explanatory? Well, yeah, we had a presentation at the last caucus meeting of this KLC-sponsored Investment Pool Plus. This was initiated by our accountant, who believes that we can make a lot more return on investment on monies that are not being used on a day-to-day basis. We received that, that presentation at the last caucus meeting. And so it'd be up to the mayor and council now to go forward with this by adopting this resolution. That would authorize the mayor and the clerk to enroll in it and begin the task of determining how much and which investment program to put the money into. So you can now either discuss this or vote on it. You can do that by motion.
Right, so that if we approve tonight, then it gives the mayor and clerk the opportunity to make that determination with council, correct, where we would discuss where the investments would be?
Well, you should make that part of your motion if you want to do it that way.
So that we motion and then we would agree that the money, if by vote, we would agree that the money would go to the money market?
You could make that part of your motion. And if the money is going to be proposed to be moved to some other form of the investment, I think there were five of them.
Right.
That the mayor would need to come back to council for a vote on that. You can make that part of your motion.
But what about the dollar amount? Because that wasn't discussed. But that's totally up to the mayor?
It would be unless you put strings on it. Unless you make it part of the motion.
We can discuss it further too, so.
Yeah, I think.
I motion the table so we can just get the details.
Second.
Rose Beach? That's okay. Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes. And resolution number four, next item of business, number 2024-03. Resolution of the city of Walton, Kentucky, adopting Northern Kentucky Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan for the year 2024. Okay, that was the title to it. Basically, this resolution would authorize the city to put its stamp of approval on the Northern Kentucky Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was adopted, or which was formulated by the Northern Kentucky Area Development District. You all heard a presentation at your caucus meeting on this. My other cities that I'm involved in have already adopted this. I do, as the attorney, recommend that you do adopt this hazard mitigation plan. There's no downside to it. There's a lot of pluses to it, as she outlined last week. So you can do that by motion.
I motion to approve.
Second.
Rose Beach? Amy Long?
Yes.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes. Council comments? Rose Beach? Councilwoman Long?
It's nice to see so many people here. I mean, really nice. Hopefully y'all come to the events planning meeting before the next city council. At 6:30? At 6:15. I'm late. I was late about work. So 6:15 to help plan the events of our town. The second Tuesday of the month.
Councilwoman Courtney?
Just echoing what Amy said. Thank you for being here tonight. Matt Brown?
Councilwoman Brown? Share here is all the Dan. Councilwoman, can I ask? I'm sorry, I'm still getting used to you.
It's all right. It's all right. I'm good. Thank you very much.
She passed.
Councilman Martin?
I have no comments tonight. Looking forward to see you guys in person.
Enjoy. Is it Iceland? Enjoy Iceland today. All right. I had some words prepared for tonight to read, but I am going to skip them, counsel. I am going to send them to you in an address this evening at 7:00. So if I could, with that, could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'm not sure that's where we want to go. Councilwoman Brown?
I didn't hear you.
She said she's not sure that's where you want to go. I said I am going to send you all a letter tonight is what she is in response to.
Will I make a motion to get them closed session?
Second.
Okay, we need to have a, you need to cite a specific. It's KRS 618101F. That's discussions or hearings which might lead to the appointment, discipline, or dismissal of an individual employee, member, or student without restricting that employee's members or student's right to a public hearing if requested. This exception shall not be interpreted to permit discussion of general personnel matters in secret. Is that what you had in mind?
Yeah, that's part of your motion.
Yep. Who's second?
I do.
Okay, is that part of your second?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
Rose Beach?
Yes.
Amy Long?
What is happening? Close session. We're basically in a close session.
Terry Courtney?
Yes.
Sherri Gaskell?
Yes.
Dan Martin?
Yes.
Matt Brown?
Yes. Now go into closed session. Anyone who is not germane to the discussion?
Will you leave the camera afterwards?
Thank you.
I don't think so.